Board meeting. Call this meeting to order at 6:02. If you can stand and say the pledge, it's behind us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so correspondence. Brian?
None this evening.
Okay, do we have public comment? See and none, so I'm going to close public comment. Moving on to the approval of the October 6th and 8th board meeting minutes. Did anybody see anything? Let's do the 6th first.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 6, 2025, as presented.
Thank you, Shane. And Jared, you second it?
Correct.
All right, any further discussion? See and none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous?
One abstention.
Oh, one abstention?
I was not.
Okay, thank you, Jack. I can't see you down there. Denise, you got that?
I was trying to wave.
All right, so now we need to do the October 8th. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 8, 2025, as written.
Perfect, thank you, Vanessa. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Rheta. Any further discussion? See and none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, so staffing?
For staffing, we have two notifications, both for one leave of absence and one student observer, so no action required of the board.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we're going to finish up our budget review. We got through Maple and Bartlett of our schools, so we're going to start on page 30 with Glenn Lake. And we'll do page by page. If you have questions, shout out. Doug, is there anything you want? I know we had questions from last time. Do we want to go through that?
Doug actually has responses to all the questions.
Yeah, so we're good to go from the questions from last time. And just a reminder to those who are watching it from home, all this information is available online as well.
Thank you.
So we had multiple budget changes from last time, some which were happening after we got our rate from Health and Dental. So Health and Dental went up $58,042. About $53,300 of that was from Health and $5,700 from Dental. So we also decreased the CRF by $300,000 because, again, that was a warrant article from last year, so that should have been out before. Then the board made two motions. They decreased the summer school stipend by $5,000 and increased the treasurer's stipend by 500, as well as moved it to a different line. So after that, our general fund budget is now $56,219,15, which is 2.8% higher than last year. We also had several questions from the board. So the first two kind of go together. They were on reference lines 106 and 107, and that was in regards to charter school services. So when students who have IEPs go to charter schools, we are still responsible for their services that are written in the IEPs. There are two ways that these services are provided. One is that the charter school might have providers themselves. So that is actually reference line 107 or account 561. So that is where the budget is $63,600. So the other one is when a charter school does not have the professional people to provide that. We still have to bring in professional people or we have to share with another district. So both of them are very hard to figure out what we should budget for because most charter schools that our students go to have waiting lists. So we don't know if we have additional students who are on those waiting lists. We don't know who will apply to other charter schools. We don't know who will get accepted. And charter schools, unlike public schools, they don't have unions. So they can start increasing their costs for professional services if they're hard to find. So if you're, you know, where we're and other people struggle to get an OT or PT, sometimes we are bound, and as other schools are, by the contracts and the union. Charter schools aren't that way. So they can increase. So we don't know what they might increase to the next year. Also, if we have to bring in a OT/PT reading service or something like that, you know, those rates are between $85 and $145 per hour. So if a charter school can't provide it, we're not bringing in a rate that is kind of smaller. Unfortunately, it is sometimes larger. So for all these reasons, they are not easy to budget for because we're talking about actual kids and then possible kids. And I think that's why a lot of times they've tried to kind of keep it steady for a couple of years. I think both of them went down in the budget from the year before. In talking with the special ed director, I mean, she's comfortable with it going down a little bit more, but she also knows that there's so many unknown variables that it could go down and we could overspend it as well.
Did you even see me cut my hand or you just said my name?
No, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I want to look exclusively at line 106. I understand 107, you know, we have actuals, empirical data to match what our budget is. But for line item 106, the empirical data is we are traditionally spending at least 2/3 of what the budget is projected to be. So, and I think I heard that the, they are comfortable reducing this line. I would like to reduce this line. I'll make a motion to reduce reference line 106 for the charter school services and other professional services. I'd like to remove $10,000 to bring it down to $56,000, which, again, is above the empirical actuals that we have for the three years listed here. So the new would be reduction of $10,000, with the proposed of being $56,524.
$924?
$924, Jared.
Is that nine or five?
Yeah.
That's a nine? Did I say five? $924. Sorry, my prior meeting was, font already hurt my eyes, so.
All right, so I have a motion by Jared. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
And Vanessa's second. Is there any further discussion?
I'm fine with this cut. I think that these lines are volatile, just as Mr. Totten said. On any given day, it's hard for us to really know and project what the special education needs will be for charter schools. So these, both of these lines, I would agree. I think that we could probably bring both of these down. But just understand that one kid could completely change these lines, and that's just what happens in a school district budget. So I'm comfortable with bringing both 106 and 107 down, but just recognize that if we have student needs, those lines will be overspent.
Right, so this is for line 106. Go ahead, Rheta.
Just to follow up to that, Brian, how do we pay for it if it does go up? I know this is something that periodically happens, so it just comes out of, you know, our regular budget, and we figure out how to deal with it afterwards.
Exactly, and then we identify if we have to do a budget transfer or not. That's exactly right. And, and again, with charter schools, we never know who's going to be accepted, who might be going, so it really is a challenge. Both of these lines are challenging lines to budget for.
But I think $10,000 is pretty safe, at least for now.
I agree, and I think that we could do something very similar on the next line.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. Ginny, sorry, go ahead.
Brian, is there any way where you can get that information so that when we're planning our budget, we actually have some people and instances of special ed that we can plan on, instead of just like flying from the hip and wondering?
So this is known students and it's known services, but their needs change over time, and the number of kids and who they are could change as well. So it's, it's not like we're shooting in the dark in that we don't have a sense of this. We have a sense of most of the children that would be potentially eligible for services under these accounts, but it can always be more kids. And it could be less kids. So it could be.
Should we be advised of new kids coming in ongoing towards the year so we know where expenses might be popping up?
I think that the way that we would do that, Ginny, is when we go through expenditure reports, if Mr. Totten had concerns about particular lines being overspent, we would identify it through that process. I think that kids moving in, kids moving out, whether they're charter school kids getting services, that isn't the kind of thing I would typically inform the board about, unless there was a line that we were concerned that we were, we were definitely going to be in a deficit situation and we needed to do budget transfers.
And I didn't mean names or anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I meant just costs that were coming in because, you know, additional students.
Yeah, so we would address that. If, so if we brought both of these lines down and then we had needs in that area, this would be something that we would come back to you next year and say, we didn't anticipate a couple of move-in students or students who changed from being enrolled in their regular schools to, in a charter school, and as a result, we had costs that we didn't anticipate.
Okay. Thank you, Ginny. Anyone else? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, so do we want to touch 107 or are we good since that's? Everybody's good with 107? Okay. All right, Doug, you want to? Where'd you go?
Yeah, he's got more.
All right, so another question was in regards to reference line 202, and that was in staff development program improvement, which has an account code of 10-0-0-22-13-18. So the budget there is consistently at $50,000. So a lot of this is tied to the contracts. Where in the GEA contract, each employee has the amount not to exceed $200 per fiscal year for conference and workshops. There's also an additional $5,000 that can support staff members who enroll in CIRC programs. Also, if there's a critical shortage area, there's, there's different ways that administration can kind of ask different teachers to kind of go get their cert as well, and that can be paid for through that also. So, you know, multiplying by, by 200 by the amount of employees we have quickly gets you close to that. It's also part of the GESS contract where they have money that they can use towards reimbursement as well. So this is both tied to the contract. I think that's why it's very steady at that $50,000.
Anyone questions? Go ahead, Laura.
I just had a question. Like, why has it not been used that much this from this past year? Is there a reason why people have opted or not opted in?
I don't, I don't know that I could pinpoint a particular reason, but this is a benefit that teachers are allowed to utilize through the contract, and some of them don't. So whether they choose to use it or not, it is still something that is included in our teacher contract as well as our support staff contract.
Yeah, go ahead, Wendy.
I also mentioned that through the Department of Ed, a number of things that used to be, you have to pay to go to, they've been offering virtually online for free. So we have seen a shift in staff taking those free opportunities rather than going to day-long conferences. There's been a lot more offered in the last two years.
So are we allowed to cut this if we want to or no because it's in the contract?
I would not recommend.
Yeah, we would definitely not recommend. Even if this line is underspent, those are amounts that are guaranteed in both the support staff contract and the teacher contract.
Sounds good. All right, go ahead, Doug.
All right, next was reference line 328, which was facilities, district temporary help. That's our summer help. So that is account code 10-0-0-26-20-00-128. So that has consistently been overspent as we've been able to hire more people for the summer and as we look to, again, take care of the property of the town and the school. So it's just a line that's been historically allowed to be overspent because there's a lot of bang for the buck at what you get in the summer for, for summer help. And that's one of the only times, you know, during the year where we have more than just, you know, an overnight to take care of things. So we do anticipate that we would overspend that again. So, you know, bumping that up could more realistic be to what the reality will be.
Any questions, comments? Leave it as is. Go ahead, Shane.
So if we are already planning on overspending the line, would it make sense to increase the line?
Typically.
Yes. It certainly would, and this, this also includes, we've gotten more aggressive about summer painting schedules, and I think that's part of the reason that this line has been overspent is sometimes we're able to hire people to do painting and some other related projects, and sometimes we're not. In the last couple of summers, we've been able to get teachers that have come in and done some painting for us. So we've been successful in finding people. So if I, if I went, if I kept looking back at the 19, 20, 21 fiscal years, I don't, they're not on this sheet, but these are probably considerably lower numbers. So particularly during the COVID years, we, we didn't have a lot of summer help happening. So I think we've just seen an increase. Would it make sense to correspondingly increase this budget line? It would. It would, so we have overspent it. And with the exception of the teacher salary line for substitutes, which we know is underbudgeted, this one, I think it would make sense to adjust it up.
I'll make a motion?
Go ahead, Vanessa.
To increase line, reference line 328 to 60 to get us closer to what it's historically been the last two years. So adding another 15 to total 60.
I'll second that.
The second by Jack. Is there any further discussion? All right, see and none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. All right, so we have one, no. Denise, motion passed. All right, Doug.
All right, the last question was in regards to reference line 676. That is account code 10-102-1100-18-641, and that is at Maple Ave. Books and printed material, they went down by $9,938. This, again, was a choice by the principal. Ms. Kohler, I don't know if you had a chance to?
I did. So I spoke to Mr. Demers, and he feels comfortable with that reduction. Over the last couple of years, they've worked on getting more decodables for our readers, as well as getting new books for our classroom libraries. So he feels strongly that they're at a good spot right now, even with looking at a new reading program, to be able to drop that line.
I would just point out on this one, typically when there's a lot of cuts, they come from me or from my office. This one didn't come from us. So as much as I am a budget hawk, I'm not into cutting library books for kids. So this is, this cut did not come from me.
So it's my understanding that that's the last of the questions or comments that people want us to look into.
All right, everybody good to move on then? So we're going to start with page 30 with Glenn Lake.
So Glenn Lake starts on line?
914.
915.
15.
Yep, 915. So halfway down on page 30. So as we have seen in the other, the other schools, we're going to begin with our 1100 lines. So these are all of our regular ed lines, including all of our staff and our staff benefits.
So again, typical to the other schools, you can see one of our larger increases has to do with equipment rental, and that's in regards to laptop leases, as well as a copier lease, matching those to increased pricing in actuals.
All right, if everybody's good, we can move on to the next page, page 31.
So there was a reduction of 500 on this page for replacement furniture.
And that reduction was recommended by the principal.
So just so, if anyone is looking at the PDF version and following along at home, we're looking at the FY '27 new column, and we're looking at any new spending. That's typically what we're looking at on these pages.
All right, if everybody's good, we can move on to the next page, 34. Oh, I skipped a page. Sorry, 32.
32.
Ms. Chair, on line 32, reference line number 981, kindergarten new equipment. I know we're budgeted at $6,000. Looking at the past couple of years, we haven't come anywhere close to that. I didn't know if we were planning on new equipment in Glenn Lake for next year.
Yeah, it's specific to special ed.
So Glenn Lake is definitely the hardest once you budget for special ed new equipment because students are eligible at an early age and before they come to our schools. So we don't always know what equipment they're going to need. So to be honest, it is one that we do keep a little bit higher because the students walk in, I think they can first walk, is it their three?
Yeah, so the way that it works is it's a rolling enrollment, and if a student is eligible, the school district has to evaluate them and write an IEP before they turn three. So at any point in time, I agree, I think our spending has been a little low on this one, and I think I would be comfortable with bringing this down. But Doug is right that we don't know what the needs of incoming three-year-olds might be.
Based on this conversation, Ms. Chair, looking at reference line 981, knowing that we've only spent 2/3 of that budget line item one year, I'd like to knock this down by at least $2,000 so that the new, the new would be negative $2,000 for a proposed of $4,000, which, again, is more than what we have in the highest year that we've spent.
So is that a motion?
That is my motion.
Okay. And Shane's second. All right, so not any further discussion? Okay, see and none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, we're unanimous. All right, was there anything else on that page? If not, we can move to 33. This is all teacher contract stuff?
Yep, this is all salary and benefits for our guidance and for our nurse.
All right, moving on to page 34.
So 34 shifts from speech into library media, which you'll see is zero. We don't have a library media specialist at Glenn Lake. And then beyond that, we get into administration on 35.
And on page 35, there's one increase.
Yeah, Doug, do you want to speak to the voice communications?
Yep, so last year, we went through a process of updating the phones because it was needed. I think the other phones were out of service or began, become out of service. So this line encompasses not only phones, whether that be kind of web phones, but also analog phones, as well as internet. So we have multiple contracts, and this is matching to the actual.
All right, if everybody's good, we can move on to page 36.
So like the other schools, we look to match electricity to the actual as well, knowing that we were a little bit above 10 cents per kilowatt hour, and now we are a little bit less than 10 cents per kilowatt hour, but not a large change. And again, that's just one of the factors that go into our bill. The next two lines, well, kind of skipping a line, you can see a plus 1,300 or minus 1,300. That's just more moving some of the replacement equipment to its correct line. So that's replacement equipment such as like surge protectors, clocks, and other things that break throughout a year and we just have to replace. You can see there's an increase for maintenance of $1,350. We had, have been having a bee problem at Glenn Lake, and we have been bringing in people now, and that's the cost of that.
All right, so moving on to page 37, the very top finishes up Glenn Lake, and then it starts Mountain View.
Would you like me to start talking about Mountain View or do we want to pause? Anything else on Glenn Lake?
Anyone? I think everybody's good. Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
Okay, we can see an increase of $11,370 for math supplies. The majority of that is that this is our first year after the initial contract of Big Ideas, and that is what they use for their curriculum, and that is consumables. So that is getting those consumables in the hands of each of the students. The next line down, you can see that we have math software. That is iXL. Again, that is online software that can adapt to the kid and give actionable feedback within seconds to the kids as well. So it's used at the other grade levels in the middle school. Next one down that we can see is an increase of $16,150. Again, we're into IT. With the majority of that, $15,000 is going to the laptop lease. We have an increase of $25,000 for replacement IT equipment. That is for the computer lab. About five years ago, we were able to receive a donation from the National Guard that had about, which gave us four labs of five-year-old equipment. So now we're up to about 10, 11-year-old equipment in there. So the goal is to start replacing that equipment as it's kind of past its age.
Go ahead, Jared.
For that particular item of $25,000 for this replacement, is that on, listed on the CIP? Is that in the planning tool?
Under $50,000.
Under, okay, under $50,000. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Oh, go ahead.
Looking at reference line 1140, could you talk a little bit about this line? Because the past two years, we have, well, last year, we overspent a lot, and we have a low number there. It looks like we spent close to $66,000 when we were budgeted $35,000, and then our budget this year and next year proposed is $5,000. So I wasn't sure why we had such a variance there.
So we're on reference line 1140?
Correct.
Okay, let me just, seven. Okay, so that increased. Okay, so last year, there was a sale of computers, and the board authorized that, the money that came in from the sales could be used to purchase additional computers. So that's where the bump up was from last year. I don't? Yep, that, no, so the last year, that bumped it up to the $65,000. So that was using the proceeds of the sale of the computers. So there was a public hearing for that, and that went into bumping up that, that line.
So my follow-up question?
Go ahead, Jared.
Why do we have $5,000 for next year? What are we planning on buying for, new technical programs equipment? Because we haven't spent anything other than that one year, and I just don't know if we need to put a dollar in here or why we continue to have just the $5,000.
I don't have more information on what that $5,000 is typically spent for.
Yeah, I'm looking in here, Doug, and I think, I'm trying to compare it to the notes so that we can. Anything else you can add from that, Doug, from the notes?
No, there's nothing in the notes on that.
So is this line mostly used for computers and other items? Because that's what was referenced when we had the public hearing and what we spent the money on that we received. I guess, I'm trying to understand what this would be targeted for if it should maintain this level of funding.
Yeah, I think it's for any of the IT kinds of equipment, right, Doug?
It is specifically new equipment, and for our computers, we tend to lease to own, so that's why it's underneath the rental.
Yeah.
You know, a line above it. So this would be, and this would not be for replacement, so this wouldn't necessarily be for Promethean boards, which we have. I guess it would be if we had to expand into a new classroom that needed a Promethean board. that needed a Peramethium board, or somebody who wanted, you know, something that was different, new equipment. But as you are stating, it has not been.
Doug, I think this might also include musical equipment? Am I looking at that right?
I don't know if that's the case. I know they have some, middle school have some iPads, or they're looking to get that, but that wouldn't, that's not part of this.
Okay.
I'm going to be, okay, so I will make a motion then, just from our conversation, that we look at reference line 1140 and reduce that by $5,000. Because it doesn't sound like we have a good understanding of what this line has been used for in the past, and the one time that we have used it, we receive grant funding, or we receive donations to expend from this line. Not to say that this would not prevent us from buying new equipment, it's just it doesn't sound like we have a proposal of what this money would be used for.
All right, so I have a motion by Jared. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
By Vanessa. Any further discussion? CNN, oh, ready? Did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just curious how, and I know we've asked the question, what it was intended for, and if it is something legitimate. I was just trying to go back through the presentations that maybe we discussed this, but otherwise...
Yeah, I think it's just new equipment. So if we had to replace a piece of IT equipment, that's what that's for. So that could be anything from servers to spam filtering to any number of different pieces of equipment that we might have to buy.
Do we not have, I thought we had other lines that would address that.
We have, but there are difference between new equipment, repairing, replacement. So there, it's in different spots.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. Is there any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you raise your hand, because there wasn't many. One, one, two, three, four, five, six. And then nays and abstaining. So I have two nays, one abstention. So motion does pass. Did you get all that, Denise? All right, so moving on, if everybody's good with page 37, we'll go on to page 38.
So no new spending identified on page 38.
All right, so we can move to page 39.
39, you're in special ed, and same story, no new spending proposed in page 39.
Ms. Chair, I wasn't done through 38.
Yeah, that's fine.
So backtracking a little bit, just the conversation, the reference line 1173, replacement of furniture and fixtures. Looks like we have a budget of 25,000, but our empiricals are roughly, the max was 11,000 in the three years.
So we increased that line, trying to get onto a replacement cycle for new furniture at Mountain View. So in the high school, we've had a replacement furniture cycle for quite some time. That's why that line was increased, I believe, last year. We were trying to get onto a similar cycle, which was, I believe, to replace two classrooms a year, approximately.
But I believe specifically, Mountain View is looking to update their science lab classrooms, and those tables are significantly more expensive than a typical classroom. So I know that that was something they're looking at doing.
So as my follow-up, are we looking to, I don't know what our actuals to date are for this year. I know that we're very early in our fiscal year.
We're early.
Yeah, but we are looking to spend the 25,000 for this year, this current budgeted year.
We would need to spend the 25,000 because there is aging equipment, aging furniture over there, and the cycle is the best way to kind of progress through a building of that size. So, yeah, so it's either kind of four to five normal classrooms that they can replace in a year, or I don't know if it's, it might be like two and a half science classrooms type of thing. And I do believe that they've been aiming towards the science at the beginning.
So we've already encumbered these funds, or will be encumbering these funds sometime in the next couple of months, so that we can get that furniture in for replacement?
I can check on, I don't mind checking on all furniture for all the buildings because we, it's always a best practice to purchase that right at the beginning of the year, so the students have access to it. So let me definitely check on that and motivate people because some of this, some of this furniture, we will benefit from it going and replacing it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. All right, so we can continue on to 39.
39 continues special education with no new spending identified.
All right, if everybody's good, we can move on to page 40.
So on 40, we see an increase of 2,500 for co-curricular. So this again is tied to what was grant-funded, and now will need to come out of the grant, and that is the summer musical, which the middle school students participate at the high school. So it's a nice bridge to the high school as well. This is more for the supplies, sets, and props, as well as the musical rights.
All right, if everybody's good, we can move to page 41.
Page 41, you're looking at school counseling and the beginning of the health office, and there's no new spending identified.
All right, moving on to page 42.
So 42, it would be health and then getting into speech and language. So these would be special ed-related services, and no new spending identified on page 42.
All right, moving on to page 43.
So 43, we go from speech to school library media, and no new spending identified on page 43.
All right, moving on to page 44.
This is going to be a multi-page question. Doug, I hope you're ready for this one. So looking at the principal and vice principal salaries that are listed on page 44, I did see that under function 1200, we also have another assistant principal listed there.
That's our special education facilitator.
At the middle school?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a different title, but that's where it's listed.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we had two, you know, assistant principals. I was trying to understand.
Yeah, it's because there isn't, in the software, there's not a special education facilitator category, that's why. And is dean of students in that as well?
Well, or the 22. The dean of students is listed as an assistant principal, isn't it, at the middle school?
Yes, I think, I think that's correct. Same thing with the curriculum coordinator.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
All right, if everybody's good, we can move on to page 45.
So page 45 here, Doug, 11,800 added for voice communications, which is the same story that we've seen in the other buildings.
That is correct. And then towards the bottom, we can see 2,000 added to miscellaneous expenditures, and that is, as we look to match what St. Az's is now charging for graduation, the actuals are about 5,000 less than the budget. So 3,000 of that went to the high school, 2,000 of that went to the middle school for their share of going to St. Az's.
Well, so this actually might not be a bad time for me to talk about this. I shared with the New Boston Board at their meeting last week, and would share with this board as well during a normal meeting where we would have superintendent's report. We've identified that last year, when we have our eighth-grade promotion at St. Anselm College, which is the same evening that we have high school graduation, this year and last year, there's a pretty significant difference between the date that we have those events and the last day of school. And this is a problem for me. So last year, our eighth graders had their high school, or their eighth-grade promotion, what was it, Wendy? It was at least a week. It was five, five or six days before the school got out, and this year, it's going to be the same story.
Without snow days.
Without snow days. So I did want to let the board know, no decisions have been made. There's, there's a lot more conversation that needs to happen. But I've asked Mrs. Milligan to start thinking about what could eighth-grade promotion look like that wouldn't involve the big show at St. Anselm College. So, and the fact that we have to spend another $2,000 only pushes me further in that direction. I didn't realize that they had increased the cost. But I wanted the board to know that that's something that we're talking about, because this year again, it's going to be, I think, six or seven school days that eighth graders would have their promotion, and then we're still expecting those kids to come to school, to follow all the rules, and have a good, meaningful end of their school year after they've already been, gone through the promotion. So I just share with that board, with the board, I think there needs to be some future conversations. But I have asked Principal Milligan to give it some thought and to consider some other options and alternatives. I recognize that there might be families that would be disappointed that we would be looking at this, but I think it's needed.
All right, thank you, Brian. Go ahead, Jared.
Moving up on the page, reference line 1369, for office of the principal, other professional services. I see the default is 4,000, but there wasn't any money in there from prior years. I guess, why would this be a default item versus a new item?
So let me double-check, but...
I'm not sure what that is.
So, yeah, so in our area agreement, every...
Oh, I know, that's what, it's, it's the appraisal.
Appraisal. Every certain amount of years, both the middle school and the high school has to get appraised. And since it's in the area agreement, which was voted on by the voters, that's why it goes in the default, and that's why you don't see it every year.
That makes sense.
When's the last time that we actually spent money on this line?
Oh, we, we did a full appraisal of Goffstown High School and the middle school. Doug, do you have how many years ago that was? I think it was five.
I think it's every five.
Yep. So the area agreement has two pieces. One is that we have to do the appraisal, and that's on a cyclical cycle. And also, our area agreement with New Boston requires us to have NIASC accreditation for both our middle school and our high school. So the NIASC accreditation is also something that is part of the area agreement and would be a default item.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if everybody's good with page 45, we can move on to page 46.
So the first increase we see on there is in regards to maintenance, which has a lot of our inspections, including our elevator inspections, and several of them have gone up. So this is our director of facilities looking to match mainly the inspections that we need to have, whether that be a yearly inspection or monthly inspection. The next line that went up is 5,000 in regards to, that is, building repairs. So that is for painting. So at the schools, they try to do a combination of hiring summer help for painting, as well as bringing in professionals. So last year, they brought in professionals to paint the stage at the middle school, because just like this stage behind the curtains, it goes up quite high. So instead of having kind of summer help on too high of ladders, we bring in professionals to do that. So the hope is to kind of continue to paint the cafeteria at the middle school as well, which would also involve bringing in some professionals to reach the heights that that's at also.
Did you have your hand up?
So then we have 5,470 for electricity, and that's just matching actuals. And then at the bottom, we have 7,500 for grounds maintenance, and that is the mowing of the hills in the front and the back. If they go unmoed, you can see that a lot of things start growing in them, things that we might not want to be growing. And it just doesn't look as nice as kind of where the middle school looks right now. Some of the school's built into a hill, and part of that hill is just kind of growth, not grass. So it's, it's at least mowing that down once a year.
All right, so we move on to page 47. The top quarter finishes up the middle school, and then we start with the high school.
Yeah, the supply increases, Doug? So we've got a $1,000 supply increase and a $3,000 supply increase.
So the first increase is part of the phys ed curriculum. So they're bringing in a new course, which I think is more aerobics-based. So that has to do with the blocks and other equipment that would go for that. Again, it's just trying to make sure that they have classes that match all the students' interests, and...
So that's because of the new, the new phys ed courses?
Yeah, lifelong kind of classes.
Same thing with the 3,000?
3,000 is more due to the rising cost of materials for creative welding.
Okay, so that was the increase in the gas costs, et cetera?
Gas cost is a little bit later.
Okay.
And then the 11,750, again, that is our, mainly our laptop lease increase.
Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Jumping back to the middle school, looking at reference line 1435, just generally asking, you know, for student transportation, I know that we spiked, quote unquote, from prior years that year. I just want to make sure that, you know, with all the athletics that we have going on at the middle school, that this busing is required.
So the reason it looks like a spike is because during the '23 and '24 years, we were not able to pay for, we couldn't hire drivers. That's why there was a significant decrease. We have been able to hire drivers this year, so we've been able to provide busing both last year and this year for our students. Again, so that's, those numbers reflect the anticipated athletics transportation cost. But Jared's exactly right. A number of years ago, we couldn't, during COVID, we couldn't hire, we couldn't find middle school bus drivers, and that's why the actuals were so low during those years.
It's a good story to say that we're actually able to have middle school athletics, and they're able to go places now.
And this is something that it was, this is an important thing for us to be able to provide. It was an incredible burden to parents. It's a deterrent for some kids to be able to participate if they don't have the ability to take a bus to the event. So I think that those are important things.
Absolutely. All right, if we're good with 47, we can move on to page 48. There's a few increases.
Yep, couple increases here.
So the first increase is 1,500, and that's asked by director of facilities, and that's just regards to equipment, repairs. Again, the costs of repairs have just continued to gone up. The next line is the welding, the gas, the acetate, acetylene that they use in there. The cost to kind of have the gas and store the gas has gone up as well. And then we have an increase of 14,900. There's two new courses going into the high school, AP Macro, AP Seminar, and then there's also an increase to grade nine reading workbooks, and then general vocab books, I believe, which are used more school-wide.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just as a general question on that line, reference line 1486, is this going to be a one-time increase that will be knocked off in subsequent years? Are we going to be maintaining that number going forward?
I would think it would drop back down because this is related to new courses.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to page 49.
So we see an increase of $400 in dues and fees. This is related to performing arts and their ensemble participation cost. This is related to performing arts and their ensemble participation cost.
All right, if everybody's good, we can move on to page 50. And there's that 250%.
Yeah, so it's sticking out as a glaring number on page 50. And again, if the Board will indulge me, this is, this is an increase because the state has reduced the amount that they pay. Historically, the state used to pay 75%, and we paid 25%, right Doug? That's how the split used to work?
Yes.
And it's now more like...
We're getting closer to 60%.
I was going to say, I thought we were paying around 56% is the percent that I remember. But so instead of us paying 25%, we're paying more than half. And as a result of that, that's a $250,000 increase. And as I shared with the Board, that's a tricky one. I think we can all agree in this day and age that it's important for kids to have access to trades education, and I think that the trades are great careers for people to go into. So I really don't want to restrict access to those programs, but there is a very reality, you know, there's a strong piece of reality here that instead of the state paying their fair share, they continue to reduce it. So we either need to increase our amount, or I start to restrict the number of kids that can participate.
Go ahead, Shane.
And just to follow up on that comment, I just want to remind the public that participation in career and technical education or vocational education, whatever you want to call it, that is an indicator that the state uses to assess how good our schools are doing. So that is something that we want to promote and have kids involved in. So putting a cap on it really isn't helpful to us. So it's a shame that we have to put more of our budgetary money into it, but we do want to support those students accessing those programs, so.
All right. Thank you, Shane. All right, anyone else on page 50? All right, so moving on to page 51.
First increase we see is in regards to co-curricular general supplies. That is $1,000, and that is to bring Best Buddies Program into the high school. It's a program which many high schools have as well. Then we see an increase of $250 to new equipment for co-curriculars, and that is due to the actual cost of maintaining the audio systems, as well as an increase of $1,200 to athletic professional services, and that is an increase for the cost of the athletic trainer.
All right, we can move on to page 52, if everybody's ready.
So page 52 is going to be a similar story when you look at reference line 1590. This is an increase for our adult ed program. This is the same story as the CTE. This is money that we historically used to receive from the state for our adult ed program grant. And at this point, that grant was significantly reduced. And in order to be able to run our core courses, to be able to offer to our students in the community, that's an increase of $35,880. And Doug, rough numbers, we were getting, I think it was around 50,000 for the gap grant?
Yep, 50 to 60,000 per year.
And so that went from 50 to 60,000 to what?
To 24,000 roughly this year, and then most likely less than 1,000 next year.
Because the 24,000 this year was a one-time...
Seed grant, most of that is a one-time seed grant that was put in.
So continued downshifting of costs from Concord.
Go ahead, Jared.
So I don't have a question on a reference line, but when you're saying this, Brian, we've traditionally spent the money, but it wasn't listed in our Fund 10?
Because it would have been, it would have had corresponding revenue.
So are we going to be reducing our grants that we receive that is added to Fund 10 as well as the food service that would go onto the warrant article? I just want to make sure that if we're adding it to Fund 10, is it being reduced somewhere else because we have paid, or this money has been paid over the years? It just came out of a different fund?
Correct. So we would need to reduce the revenue that we would anticipate that we would have received in the past, so that revenue will be reduced.
And that is also included on the warrant article?
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Jared. Go ahead, Jenny.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that this is another one of those programs that our high school is tested on as far as when the statistics come out of where your school's standing is in the state. This program, along with MST, are both things that are considered in their figuring out those standings. And so both of these are really important because if we take them out, it would make it look like our schools are failing. And they're not. So this is like money that we really have to put in, or it makes our students look like they're not performing, and it has nothing to do with that. So I think it's important. And I think it's important for the public to know that this money that's not coming from the state, it could potentially put their kids in a losing situation as far as standing goes.
Thank you, Jenny. Go ahead, Shane.
Thank you. Another important thing to note is that this is, the adult education program is something that is really a community program because it's not just for students who are currently in the high school. It's for really any non-completer to get their high school diploma. So you could look at this as not even just being a school program, but this is really a community program that is of huge benefit.
Thank you, Shane. Appreciate that. Are we all good with page 52? To move on to page 53.
Yeah, the other, on page 52, the other new spending that you see is all the corresponding benefits associated with the 35,800 for the gap salaries.
All right, so if we're ready, we can move on to page 54.
So 54, we're looking at our guidance, we're looking at our health for our school nurses in getting into speech. So the salary and benefits associated with those programs, no new spending identified.
All right, we can move on to page 55.
So 55 goes from speech to library and media, and again, no new spending identified for FY '27 on page 55.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just questioning line 1690. This has been traditionally underspent, and I just want to make sure that we have added, did we move somebody here? Because we're, have a budget of roughly $80,000, but we've only spent $38,000 in prior years? So I guess, why do we have a variance there is really the question I'm asking.
So it's the library media specialist, and that's teacher salary. Why would it have been 37,000 for FY '25? I think that the number that you see there looks like the salary for that individual. So I think that's the accurate number. Doug, any sense of why it would have been half of that the year before?
I do not, no.
I mean, we're budgeting at $80,000 for somebody, something, you know, an individual that we paid 38,000 for. I don't know if this needs to match. Am I getting my lines crossed again?
No, I think, I think you're right. I think what I'm seeing here is there might be a little cross between the, so the 1690 and reference line 1691, one is the teacher salary line, and the other is paraprofessionals for some of the, we do have paraprofessional support in the library. Doug, I don't know if maybe the teacher came out of, I don't understand why that would be half of the teacher cost. I don't have a good answer for that.
At this point, I don't have a good answer either.
I think that the numbers are accurate, that is the teacher salary, but I can't speak to FY '23 or FY '24.
Well, again, if I'm looking at line 1690, we have 33,000, 36,000, again, I'm rounding 38,000. We're budgeted at 77,000, 81,000, and 81,000 again. So our budget is almost double what's actually been paid. And I'm questioning, why is our budget still that high instead of being reduced? Because it seems like it's covering for the individual based on their actuals.
Was there like a vacancy that just wasn't filled? A second person?
And did we increase our staff?
There's, no, we didn't increase staff. There's only one library media specialist at Goffstown High School.
But wasn't she put in that position just a couple years, a year ago, two years ago?
So...
Wasn't she part-time and then went full-time?
No.
Go ahead, Jenny.
Didn't we have the year at Goffstown High School where there was, we didn't have a librarian, but we had someone else in that role? So could that be where the 36,000 came from?
I thought she was a teacher.
So the library media specialist was a former English teacher, but she went from the classroom into the library.
But didn't she, she didn't do both in one year? No?
I don't believe so.
I do remember what Jenny is saying.
So I think that the amounts listed for FY '27, I think are accurate. I can't speak to the previous year. I don't, I don't know why that's half of the teacher cost.
So I guess my question, Brian, and if we can answer this, we're budgeting that at, again, rounding $81,000. The actuals for last year was $38,000. Should we be dropping this line to match actuals?
We should not be dropping this line because that is the cost of the teacher.
But the actuals just don't match up with what we've paid for that particular line item?
Yes, I see that, but I'm questioning the actuals.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, we have a full-time library media specialist in this school who has been full-time and will continue to be full-time. It looks to me, for whatever reason, I'm not entirely sure, oh, hold on, Mrs. McCann looks like she might have an answer.
I was gonna say, I was about to say, we can just blame it on Scott, and I'm good with that answer too, so.
All right, so according, thank you, Mrs. McCann. According to Mrs. McCann, the library media specialist was only 50% in the library for the first, she was split teaching English and then moved in full-time. So that's exactly what happened.
That's what we said.
Yeah.
I remembered something along that line.
Yep. I didn't remember that she was split between those.
Who's question in Jenny's memory?
All right, so then that's more good with that line. Okay, thank you, Jared. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
All right, is there anything else on page 55? If not, we'll move on to page 56.
So page 56, we go from library media into the office of the principal and admin. No new spending identified on this page.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just looking into next year and the retirement of our current principal and our associate principal moving into that role, I see that our assistant principal salary hasn't changed. So what are we repurposing that current role into that would maintain that money?
So the reason that those are flat is because the admin salary pool would be where we would get any salary adjustments for the administrators. It would be in that separate, the salary pool line.
Let me rephrase. So we're going to be losing an administrator at the end of this year, and are we repurposing that administrator into a different administrator? And what would that be?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. So the current position that our associate principal is in is the vacant curriculum coordinator position. It is our intention to refill that position a year from now. So I have had conversations with Mr. Grison and Mrs. McCann about what they are thinking about that position, but we are planning to reuse that position again for the curriculum role. And current year, Mr. Grison is doing a lot of those functions along with Mrs. McCann.
Go ahead, Jared.
My follow-up is, and we're expecting the salary of the curriculum coordinator to be equivalent with an associate principal that we currently have.
So the salary for a curriculum coordinator would not be commensurate. And so for next year to go back to that curriculum coordinator role, I think we have sufficient money for that.
My last follow-up for this line. So if I'm looking ahead, our actuals that we're projecting for 2027 will probably be less than what our budget is because of the changes that are being made in the job titles.
For FY '27?
Correct. Because current, you know, we're saying that the base salary, the default, for the assistant principal and the curriculum coordinator and the dean of students is going to be $301,000. Knowing that the curriculum coordinator is going to be significantly less than the associate principal, should this be less?
It should not be yet less because, as I recall, when we, when we approved the salary for the associate principal, we had overspent the line because the salary was slightly higher than the curriculum coordinator. So for next year, we should be fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Shane, did you have your hand up?
No.
No, you did.
The question, my, my comment was answered.
Okay. Perfect.
Or introduce to the table.
Go ahead, Laura.
I just had a question on line 1712 for the GHRS replacement furniture. I said the actual in 2025 is almost $5,000, and then it just has 350 proposed. I know there was talk of replacement carpet furniture tables, is that correct?
Oh, yes.
So our current thought with the carpet, as well as the tables, is to use the capital reserve for that due to the cost of those purchases.
All right, thank you. All right, if we're good with page 56, we can move on to page 57.
So on page 57, the first thing you see is an increase of 8,000 to maintenance, and that is regards to the hazardous materials, which unfortunately, we have some that have continued to be stored that we no longer need. So this is a one-time kind of increase where they would come in and, you know, kind of get that extra material away from the school, and then we'd go more into a maintenance of that, which would be less. So we've had, when we first made the budget, we had a first quote of 9,300 for that one-time service, but we have since followed up and received another quote where we think going into next year, we could get it for 5,000. So we do feel comfortable reducing that by 4,300. That's not the only thing in that line as well, that there's maintenance to other things that have kind of stayed equal. But as far as the increase, that was solely to do with the hazardous materials.
So Doug, you're saying we can take the 8,000 down?
We can reduce by 4,300, so yeah, we can take it down.
So moved.
All right, so Jared made the motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
By Rheta. All right, so that's decreasing it by 4,000?
4,300 if we want.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, just...
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
What's the proposed number now?
4,600 increase?
Give us...
So...
50, 60, 450?
So it'd be an increase of 3,700 instead of an increase of 8,000.
All right, so is everybody good? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
So we have voice communications. Again, that went up. High school has a lot to do with the internet, and that's partly why you can see a larger increase there. We also have an increase of 1,000 to miscellaneous expenditures. That's the cost to support community events in the evenings, as well as professional development days that happen throughout the school year. Then we have an other pupil service miscellaneous expenditures increase of 3,000, and that's the other part of the increase to graduation at St. Anselm. So 2,000 for the middle school, 3,000 for the high school. So $2,000 for the middle school, $3,000 for the high school.
So they went up five grand.
I think they have been up, and we just haven't changed our budget. So now that we know that they're up by a little bit, and then they're going to go up a little bit more, so it wasn't a one-time jump, we're just adjusting the budget at this time.
All right, if everybody's good, we can move on to page 58.
So 58, we see a reduction of $3,500, that has to do with the removal of the cardboard dumpster recycling line.
And same story on the electricity, Doug?
Same story on the electricity.
Go ahead, Jared.
And just looking at the line right below it, the propane line 1797, we get a better rate, is that why we're not adjusting that to match actuals?
That is correct, we looked at our actuals and the rate that was used for that, and our rate that we now have, and our rate isn't a flat rate for next year, but each time it goes down.
Sweet, thank you.
All right, and if we're good with that, we can move on to page 59.
Increase of $4,000 for new equipment for the building, that is for a new floor equipment machine. Decrease of $1,500 to replacement equipment, which was also the recommendation of the director of facilities.
So Doug, is there anything you would like to say to wrap up the end of those budget pages?
No, I've just been appreciative of everyone's time, it's been great working with the admin at each of the buildings, they definitely look at each of their lines, you can see that they have been reducing themselves. Again, the push is for the teachers, that should always be a big push of any school. You know, we have some unfortunate things that have happened in regards to, you know, our cost towards the technical school as well as gap, but, and, you know, we have other things that we knew were going to increase in regards to technology, because we want to make sure, even though we're not a one-to-one school, that we are providing the technology that both the students and the teachers need in order for the teachers to be able to do the job that they want to do and for the students to grow. But it's been great kind of working with the teachers, admin, as well as the SAU folks. So my first year, but it's a great group of people to work with.
Awesome, thank you, Doug. All right, does anybody have questions, comments? Go ahead, Jenny.
Well, this is kind of, I've been hearing some kind of complaints of our website, and I know at one point on PNC, we were talking about working on that, and it's ridiculous for our IT director or people to do that because they're completely overworked as it is to just keep up with the things that they need to be, keep functioning for our students. And I'm wondering if there's any money in this budget at all, I know it's kind of crazy even to bring it up because we have to keep our costs low, but any money to bring our website to the comfort of people out there a little bit more?
Well, so a couple things on that. The first piece is, the website is, has been rolled into the new website, which is all mobile-friendly, so if you were to look at the website on your phone, you would have a much better experience, excuse me. What we talked about in the past was, we don't have a website that is professionally maintained or hosted by an external agency. So yes, if we wanted to put more money towards the website, that would allow us to have perhaps a different design of the website, a different ability to make changes to the website, et cetera, but at this point, we have, I think the ship has sailed on that. I think that we have, we have an open source website that allows multiple people to be able to put content on it, and so to change that model now, I think would be a fairly cost expense, a fairly high expense to do so, but I think people should be aware that the new website has rolled out and it is designed to be mobile phone-friendly. So there will be some growing pains as we switch from one website to the other, we've been working really hard to make sure that links aren't broken, but as you know, our IT department is one of the departments that we continue to be short-staffed, so we don't have an influx of people to do those tasks, for sure.
I just wanted to point it out because it has been out there in the public, and I know we had looked into it before, and in order to get someone to maintain our website because our IT department isn't able to put the time and effort in, you know, to do a perfect website like businesses might have, I just wanted to put out that we have studied it, we have looked into it, and we're doing the best that we can, that money will allow. So if we had tons more money, then we would have, probably have a much better website. We're doing the best that we can with what we have, for dollars, I think.
I think that's accurate.
Thank you, Jenny. Go ahead, Rheta.
If I can just quickly follow up, this is something that PNC has been tracking and working with Stephen Borger on, on the website. We haven't met since the new website came out, and we'll, it is on the agenda, or will be on the agenda, understanding that it's, it's not something we're looking to change right now, but making improvements and recommendations, but I fully agree, it's not something an IT director should be managing or maintaining. I think that if somebody could be hired, whether we have it in this year's budget or an upcoming budget, it's worth the expense to hire somebody just to keep it maintained.
Thank you, Rheta. Okay, so we've gone through the budget, and our packet we had till tomorrow, go ahead, Jared.
I think I know the speech you're going to make, but before we do that-
Yes.
Doug, looking at the very beginning in our district line, I know that we moved our administrative salary pool increase into the district lines, specifically, as I understand it, line 287. 287 is the administrative service district salaries, which I believe is what we use to give raises to those people that don't have contracts, or that aren't bargaining unit contracts. This has increased 3% from the prior year. As we look at line 287, which is currently defaulted at $72,100, what pool of people would be making up that money for raises?
So that would be all Goffstown administrators?
Dean of students, principals, assistants principals, curriculum coordinators, does that include administrative assistants?
That does not include administrative assistants, so administrative assistants would be in a different line. So that's just your administrators across the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school. As well as district-wide programs.
And so this was increased only at 3%. Some people might see that's high, that's, some people might see that low, but this was just basically the salaries and raises that they got for this year is 3% of the prior year, which is the pool. Which, do we know what line item would be, the administrative assistants and things of that nature?
Well, it would be, you mean like all the administrative assistants? They would be broken out by, so they wouldn't be in the district lines?
They would be in the district line.
They would be in the individual school lines? Support staff would be in the individual school lines?
And since they have a union contract, theirs would be an exact amount that was known, that would be in it as well, that would be stepped up from the union contract.
They are part of the GSS?
Yeah, so there's no pool-
GESs?
There's no pool for the admin assistants.
I might be confusing that with SAU-level individuals that aren't part of the GESs or any of that.
Correct, because there's no union at the SAU, correct.
That's my confusion, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, team.
So you good, Jared?
I'm good.
All right, so we need to put our budget to the budget committee, and we have till tomorrow, so we can either do it tonight, or we would have to meet again tomorrow to do it. So it is up to the pleasure of the board. Go ahead, Jared.
I know that I have no further questions nor any respondents, I think the administration needs for me to move forward with this budget, once we have the final number to move forward.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Anyone else want to comment on it? Doug, do we have a final number?
So I have, that way made, five motions that passed tonight, that reduced it by $10,000, increased it by $15,000, reduced by $2,000, reduced by $5,000, and reduced by $4,300. So that would give us a total budget for Fontaine of $56,213,215.
Ms. Chair, I'd like to move that number to the budget committee.
All right, so I have a motion by Jared, do I have a second?
I have a second.
By Shane, I saw his hand up. Any further questions, comments? All right, C and N, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Awesome. So then this will get presented next week, correct?
Yep, as you will, so we, we're scheduled to present to the budget committee on the 30th?
Thursday.
Thursday, the 30th, it was supposed to be Tuesday, Wednesday, now it's going to be Thursday, and then the next Tuesday, I think?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so next Thursday, we will, we'll be there.
Awesome. All right, so moving on, three things. The budget?
The budget.
We didn't really talk about anything else tonight. Yeah, just moving the budget to the budget committee, we'll just do one and three, right?
Maybe, maybe you don't do a three things for this one.
Just do one big one.
That's what I think, I mean, it's just-
Or we just say, review the budget.
Yeah, I would just hold off.
So any other business that may come before the board? Go ahead, Rheta.
Did we want to talk about the-
Yes, yep, I was behind doing that. So I'm not sure if everybody recognizes, but November board meeting, there was only scheduled one on November 10th, so it's not the first Monday, it's not the third Monday. Is that a conflict? I think when the schedule was made, it was thought that we only needed one meeting that month, but if we want to go back to Tuesday, the first Monday and the third, we can, we just need to know now. What is everybody's pleasure? Go ahead, Rheta.
I just want to remind PNC that we still have our meeting on November 3rd, so we would be-
Here at 6:00.
Here at 6:00. Also, we have the awards that we would need to get out, and again, I think if we did it, maybe we could notify people at the beginning of November that we're open for nominations, and usually the deadline is by the end of November.
Okay. Go ahead, Shane.
I do believe we have a policy review committee and probably curriculum meeting scheduled for the 3rd.
17.
17.
Oh, 17, sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we could change that to the 10th if we need to. So it's really if everybody is okay with the 10th, having one school board meeting, or if we want to have one on the 3rd and potentially on the 17th.
10th is the soccer banquet, so I wouldn't be there. Kind of school. It's the day before Veterans Day?
Yeah.
No school?
No school here on Veterans Day.
Correct.
Right. But school on Monday.
It's up to the board at this point, we don't have a, an overflow of topics that I think we were looking to push through, so I think the one meeting at this point is likely sufficient, but we're happy to do whatever the board would like.
Would we have a quorum? If we had it on the 10th? Because we have one out. You would be out?
Maybe out.
Okay, so that's two, we still have a quorum, we need five.
I have it on my calendar for the 10th, so I'm good.
You did write it on your calendar, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it was on the sheet for the 10th. All right, Jenny, are you okay? You look, are you okay with the 10th?
November 10?
Yes.
Yes, I've-
You had that too?
I've had it on my calendar all along, so yeah, I'm good.
Okay, Jack, Laura, you guys are good? Jared? Okay. All right, so then our next board meeting would be November 10th, back in the library at 7 o'clock.
And then subcommittees will meet on the 17th.
Yes. Policy and C and E, correct? On the 17th.
Will those outlook meeting makers be revised so they populate on our calendars correctly? No. Yes? Yes, no?
For which meetings?
Because the 10th was already on our sheet.
Yeah, but at the beginning of the year, all these were loaded into our outlook calendars through our SAU emails to populate, so that's what I'm looking at here, so if those move, so they stay accurate to the sheet?
Yeah, they should, right, so you have it that it was the 3rd?
I'm assuming Mrs. Moran made the meeting makers?
Scott did.
Scott made the meeting makers?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess my question then, moving forward, is when we have these discussions about moving the dates, do the meeting makers get moved? Is that like best practice, or?
Yeah, we would typically do that.
Should be done.
Okay. This is the first one.
This is our first time doing this.
For this, this one, right?
Yeah, well, no, this year, we've never done-
The meeting.
The meeting, yeah, this was the-
Yeah, totally.
Very first time, so we just need to make sure Scott changes that, if he hasn't. All right, so is everybody good on when you are meeting? Okay.
So nothing on the 3rd?
Nothing on the 3rd.
Except for PNC.
Right, PNC. Yes. Okay, is there anything else? Everybody's good?
Someone to show me how to get to that calendar?
All right, and we have no non-publics?
No non-publics.
So Jared, motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
By Vanessa, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, guys, thank you, good job. Seven?